You're gonna have another video now for people to see it?
We would bring it forward here when it's done, yes. Because we would need permission then to go out to bed and once we have the funding together. And I believe only to seek additional grant funds as well. This is an expensive project and we're gonna have to really do some fundraising.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moda. Anybody else? Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Taylor, I have two questions for you. The first is concerning the grant itself and I understand you might not know this, but since it's a match grant, you know what the life of the grant is? So how long we have to achieve the matching funds if we are rewarding the grant?
It's initially a three-year deadline for the grant, but you also have two opportunities to extend it. So we have up to five years.
So there's one-year extensions?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question I have is concerning the design. I know this was talked about in some of the potential designs and I understand that it's not final, so you might not be able to answer this, but the tennis courts, the clay tennis courts at Jordan. I know initially they were discussed as being that's where this was going to be placed. Something that was brought up to me in the last few days, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, is that there was, since those courts are named after someone, there was a legacy that was left to the city for the care of those courts. And I just was curious if you could look into that, see if that's true first of all. And secondly, what, and this is a question for solicitors as well, if it is true, what type of legal issues will we run into if there is a legacy for that and we get rid of the courts?
I have yet been unable to find anything as to that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Robinson, anybody else from council?
Just follow up. So are you saying that the park, excuse me, the skate park will be in with the tennis court?
Yes.
Is that like self-studied?
Well, we've brought it forward. This has been discussed for the past couple of years. So that is the location that meets the criteria that works best for the location of a public skate park?
There's nowhere else in the park that we can put it.
We have looked at other parks and we believe...
Not in that park. Nowhere else in that park that we can put it.
No, we do not believe that...
I just like, I just hate to get rid of the tennis court, which I think is also something, I mean, we need as much, as much opportunity for youth to spend some time in having some fun. Tennis is one of them, obviously. To replace that with a skate park, well, if the skate park can be put in someplace else like in the park, in the same park. I mean, I'm all for the skate park, obviously. I've been advocating for that for a very long time. But I just like to not take one, you know, fun things for them to do in place for another if we can have both.
I understand that these are former clay courts. They have not been used as tennis courts for several years.
Probably we don't have a program for them. Probably if we had some program for tennis, they may use them.
There is, there just has been no demand for it. There's been no asking for it. We get questions.
I know.
We've turned tennis courts actually into basketball courts because of the interest in basketball. But I understand, I understand. We just simply have not had, they're sitting there unused. And we believe that there would be a great use of the skate park.
I just, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that, you know, youth are yearning for something for them to have fun at, you know? And probably we need programs for them, you know? Probably get somebody who plays tennis to come over and have a laugh. You know, I mean, something that, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, that we shouldn't have the skate park. Don't get me wrong. What I'm saying is, do we need, do we need a program for tennis? I mean, this is opportunity for everybody. I mean, we have programs for golf, we have programs for baseball, we have programs for football, all kinds of things about tennis. That's why I didn't say...
Let me disagree with your comments. And I'm not trying to put this in negative aspect towards you, but there are more kids skating today than playing tennis, okay? And I'd rather have them skating at a skate park rather than skating in dangerous situations such as on the steps around high school or down, you know, Seventh Street, something like that. I think this is, I think at one time, we had a group here, I think Ms. Moda brought it.
Yeah, it was not me.
Oh, it's Millie, okay. Sorry, Millie.
Hi.
We had a group here, about fourteen, sixteen students. And I don't negate the fact that, you know, we have to give opportunities for tennis, for golf, the whole bit, but they were very enthusiastic with that. And that's why we went forth with the recommendation to do a skate park. And I just think it's the right thing to do at this time because it's 2018.
No, Ms. Millie, I don't want people to get the wrong idea.
Yeah.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that to do the skate park.
Right.
What I'm saying is, if we can put it someplace else, probably we can put a tennis court someplace else. It's always good to have as much as we can.
I agree.
I've enjoyed the skate park, I've wanted, I've been asking for it for years. Especially when Millie came over with her son one time. In fact, I helped her to try to get one, you know, a mobile skate park that she'd been using. But I'm all for the skate park. In fact, I just came from California and I went to Venice Beach and I have video of people in the skate park which are really, really nice. So I want a real nice skate park. But I'm saying, we need as much support for our youth as we can. And just because they don't play tennis, it may be because we don't have somebody pushing it. I mean, it's a good sport.
Absolutely. If I could, we could, I would be happy to go back to my staff and talk about the possibilities of seeing if there's interest in tennis at our other tennis courts. We have tennis courts at Roosevelt, we have tennis courts at Andre Reed Park. And we could try something there to build a tennis park.
I just want more programs possible, that's all.
Absolutely.
I mean, and we have our kids and just because they probably don't have somebody to motivate them doesn't mean that they probably won't do it using it. That's all. So it requires some recreations.
Absolutely, yes.
I consider recreational, I guess. Very kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Did you bring plans, if there's somewhere in my head here that I thought you brought, you showed us architectural plans on this like a year or so ago, correct?
Yes.
And all the councils saw it at that time.
Yes.
And as far as the other courts, we do have other tennis courts, correct?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that in order to have top-quality skate, we can't have it small. It has to be large. We're gonna have to remove some of the things like our tennis courts that aren't being used. And I'm certainly in favor of it because I do believe that we have other, I know that tennis isn't what it used to be, but I do remember those plans. They were beautiful plans. And I remember when they came, people from Bethlehem came because, you know, and I remember that was like a year or so ago. And also pickleball. Have you heard about pickleball?
Yes, yes.
It's a seniors...
We're near pickleball, yes.
Mr. Mayor, have you heard about pickleball? Yeah. You talked about, you said something about possibly Roosevelt having us in one of the courts. So there is skate parks, pickleball, you know, and I'm in favor of this.
I'm in favor of it.
But if you still have those designs, it'd be nice if you bring it along with it.
Yes, and we'll make sure that they are on the website.
Ms. Afton, am I the only thing I do is skee-ball?
Okay, well, what is pickleball?
Pickleball, pickleball is, it started in Florida for seniors. And it's, that's how I would know. And this is why I'm introducing it to you. It's, you have a paddle and a huge pickleball. And it's between table tennis and tennis, so you don't have the whole court. So people our, of certain age, can play a good, healthy game without hurting ourselves. So think about pickleball. I'm gonna make you do the ribbon cutting for that.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Still trying to figure out why it's called pickleball. But Millie, I think you want to address this issue? By the way, I just want to remark that I do see a skateboard in the audience now. I do not see any tennis racket.
Yeah, let me just say that before. I don't want you to think that I'm not supporting the skate park. Don't believe that. That's not what I'm saying. Okay, what I'm saying is, let's provide as much, much sports as possible. And doesn't have, I mean, obviously I want the skate park and I want a night skate park, skate park. Sorry, something I missed over there, Mr. Grayson?
No, sir.
Okay.
He was just talking about air short of $2 million, that's all. We're sorry, Millie, your turn.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just so that everybody's aware, Mr. O'Leary, he was at the second community meeting that was held at the cigar factory. And I was there with my son, one of our two sons that are skaters. I have been asking for this since 2014. I currently do have in my possession a small skate park that I take around the city and open up for the youth to, if anybody wants to join me, for free, we got homes. And this skate park, this skate park and this design, I think I tell you, I've been a big supporter of it. And the reason why it's costing this much is that where it is going to be placed in Jordan Park, there was an issue about drainage. And I think that was a little bit of the expense was that that tennis court, it kinda has drainage issues. And so that's why they felt that the skate park would be best there. Also, in proximity between White Hall and Allentown, this was the safest route for the kids to be able to go and not try to, you know, play a whack-a-mole with the city cars. Currently, we just addressed, I told Lindsay that they're taking out of Steven Park the new cement benches and they are grinding on them because there is nowhere for skaters to actually go. And I don't fault them, but I mean, it is a new park and I would wish that they didn't do it. But I understand the need for them to get out some of this energy between the hours of three to seven where there is no entertainment for these youth in the city. And as a parent of six kids and hundreds of countless foster kids, I can tell you that we need this. We need the city to be behind us. This skate park and the design and all the work that Lindsay and the park department has put in is tremendous. And all of us that have gone to the meetings and we have had our own special community meetings aside talking and some of them are here now, talking about what this means to us. This is, this can change our kids' life. You may not see it, but it can. And I wish that City Council please pass forward and just authorize this and let's get it moving because we waited too long. This is, you know, my son is 22. He started when he was 14, asking Council with his 35 friends to come and please give us a skate park. So just, you know, Rocco's nine, I don't want him to be 22 when the skate park opens. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and I do skate because I'm a mother of six.
We're gonna be there filming him, Millie.
Wait too long, your son's been playing pickleball.
Well, yes, what I would like to say is that I do agree with Millie. This has been, you know, a long time and we need to have this happen. But I also think that we need to get the money. So we need to either write grants or, you know, find the money one way or the other, definitely. So when they came, when they came here last year, I was really impressed. They did a great presentation. All the kids, they showed up. So they were, you know, it was great support.
Thank you, Ms. Moda. Yeah, just a general question on the financing. You said this is three years and then an extension, two extensions, one-year extensions on it. Are we gonna be, obviously we're gonna budget some money for that too. Is that gonna be broken down over the years or is it all gonna be in one year? Do we know how we're gonna approach it?
Well, the design is, the design is two phases. So the grant is for the first phase and then we would have to start the fundraising again for the second phase. So right now, we want to concentrate on getting the first phase done and then raise the additional.
The design should give us a...
The design is for both phases, yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a quick follow-up. Something Ms. Canales said. Ms. Taylor, as part of this, because obviously Summer Avenue is a rather dangerous road, it's become more dangerous with the fact that it's now become a conduit with the Tillman Street Bridge being closed. As part of this design, is any type of pedestrian safety at the intersection being considered? Because obviously putting the skate park there is going to increase the usage in the park a lot.
We have, we don't, we have not looked at the intersection. We are designing, in the process of designing, the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail, which will come and cross, there will be a crossing designed for that, to cross into Jordan Park for kids, for people to access Jordan Park as part of the greenway. So we are doing something there.
Okay, since there are two different plans though, with two different funding streams, two different... Is there a desire from your department to potentially look at improving that intersection ahead of the Greenways plan if it would get held up? So that if the skate park does come first, we're prepared and that intersection is ready to go for those kids? I just wanted to throw that as a suggestion.
I'm happy to follow up with Public Works. I work with Public Works on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else from, well, we actually, we were out at the, out of the, out of the audience. Anybody else?
Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you. Evening. My name's Matt Pepe. I'm from Bethlehem. I just want to say that I've been a long-time skateboarder for over 15 years. The city of Bethlehem has an amazing skate park that they worked over 10 to 12 years to get built and it's still not finished. I just want to say that this park in Allentown and Jordan Park will be a great addition to the city of Allentown. It'll help skateboarders progress. It's just as if people who play basketball or baseball or something like that, they need a place to practice, so do skateboarders and BMXers in the community. And this will be a great addition to the city of Allentown, I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Kenneskey, 779 Beth Street, Allentown. First of all, I did not expect to get a pickleball dissertation tonight, so... Vice President Afton, you have educated me and I appreciate that very much. Just a couple of questions. $1.4 million? And understand, I am not questioning the need for this or whether we should have it. I totally agree with you guys, so understand that. It seemed like a steep cost. Like what is that entailing? Is there like a lot of concrete that needs to be poured? Is there...
It's, the park is almost all concrete, so there's a lot of, there's holes, there's hills, there's various features that are included. And it's a regional-sized skate park. It's a large skate park.
What, my apologies, I didn't interrupt you there. What are we talking in terms of like square footage area?
I don't, it's about the size of four tennis courts.
So roughly like the size of, Trexler Middle School used to have, I don't know if they still use that as a parking lot or if it's back to tennis courts. So like roughly that size up next to the baseball fields there?
Yes, but if you're at Jordan Park and you see the clay courts, it's virtually the clay court area.
Okay, all right.
It's very familiar.
Are we aware that there is another skate park in this city? Can anybody on council?
Yes, Mark, yes.
Okay, I can, okay. So my question with that is, what are the maintenance costs of maintaining the skate park at Keck Park?
The maintenance at Keck has been small, it's a small skate park. It's been basically small repairs, graffiti, trash collection, things like that, glass collection, things like that.
Okay, and that would just be my main concern. And obviously, for the safety of the skateboarders, I wouldn't want the park to be, you know, trash and there be, you know, glass all over the place and it be a constant, you know, just a tractor of, you know, various things that we don't want to see in our city. But I'm just concerned, just, I don't know, it just seems like $1.4 million is a little steep. Again, this is the ignorant basketball coach in me that knows nothing about skateboarding. No disrespect to the gentleman in the audience, but I just, you know, would advise council that, you know, if we're gonna go forward this, I think we all agree it's a good thing that we just be aware of cost overruns so we don't run into another Cedar Beach pool situation. Thank you.
Thank you. The one in Bethlehem, they did it through phases and it cost about that much money. The initial amount was very little, but the second phase was a lot more. So they do cost a lot, it depends how much leverage it gets to as well.
Okay.
So one of the skateboarders, doesn't it hurt when you fall on concrete when you're flipping?
It does, but I will say that, I will say that Keck Park, it's falling apart. There's missing rails, it's all rusted, it's not worth it anymore. You might as well just upgrade it to a high-end concrete park with that's worth the $1.4 million.
Thank you. All right, okay. We're gonna keep, we're gonna keep a little bit of control here, I think. Sorry, your name?
My name is Gee and I grew up right up the street from the skate park in Bethlehem. And once that skate park opened, it like pretty much changed. Like I was just like another kid, like pretty poor, like not really good, not good people. Well, I don't know, that doesn't really matter. But right now, I'm working with the skate shop and we're doing an after-school program. They were trying to build for skateboarding after school for the little kids. And we just started with Dunningan Elementary for the past two summers, as well as North Hampton Community College, which they have like Horizon to View program. And there's also a skate park being built in Quagertown that's also receiving funding. So once we get Quagertown, Allentown, and we also have Bethlehem, it'll make the after-school program a lot better for the kids. We're gonna be able to grow the program. We're gonna be able to teach them how to film, build their ramps, use their skateboards and all the other athletic skateboard rides.
So what you're saying to us is that you, when that skateboard park was built, you took advantage of it and now you're helping with other kids?
Yeah, I work with the Dunningan Elementary School.
Thank you.
Do you have tournaments? Like we had this fabulous skate park here. Are there statewide tournaments?
It depends on, well, not really. Some companies, like skateboard companies, like come into town and they do their own like content and stuff, but not really anything organized.
But there's a possibility of having some type of tournaments or...
Yeah, absolutely. Every year, we usually do a contest that's linked with the skate shop
and that brings other people to the city.
Called Element. And they do it yearly, I believe. And also Philly Am, which is a traveling contest. They travel across Pennsylvania, different contests and events.
You know, I have three sons in the field and skate. And I spent a lot of money on skateboards and equipment and things. But one of the things that they used to get, or one of them at least, they got endorsement from the shops and from some of the companies.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have some of your growth and expenses also.
Would you say I'm sorry?
I have that with some of the growth and expenses. Do you guys get some of the endorsement as well?
It's pretty hard because, like I said, there's only that one skate park. So not a lot of skaters could attest to being like any professional or anything. Like not a lot of people come out of Bethlehem or Allentown or Easton as professionals skateboard because we don't have the resources to practice or improve.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I wanted to come up and try to address a little bit your very specific questions, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Hoffman, if you would just say your name first because if they ever have to transcribe this, they don't know who's talking. It just gives you your name when you come up to talk. You're Mr. Hoffman, I know that.
Okay, Joe Hoffman again, 334 North 13th Street. Anyway, I think what you're facing tonight, I think pretty much I'm getting the sense that most everybody likes the skate park. So I don't think that that's the issue. I was fortunate enough to be on the steering committee and I thought it was a wonderful series of presentations and I think you're getting a very good skate park. But your other question is what intrigues me, which is, how do we decide where to put things and how do we decide what to sacrifice to put these things? And I'm going to tell you that you're gonna face that question again and again and again over the next five to 10 years. We are right now at about the 100-year mark since the founding of the Bureau of Recreation back right after the First World War. Its first superintendent was Irene Wilti. At the time she was superintendent, there were a grand total of two parks, West Park and half of what today is Fountain Park and a couple scattered ballfields at Boyle Park and one or two other places. That's it, that's all there was. In this hundred years, you've grown into a system of well over 2,000 acres, well over three dozen sites and a radical change in the population of the city of Allentown, both in terms of numbers and in terms of all kinds of ethnic and other characteristics. As a result, your next 100 years is not going to be adding 2,000 more acres. There's not 2,000 acres to add. What you're going to have to do is change your parks. Every time I drive by them, and I've driven by them all my life, I see facilities that, when my father was superintendent 50 years ago, those facilities were running day in, day out, night in, night out. Six, seven, eight months a year, you couldn't get on. Now they sit empty. You can't have a park system where things sit empty. You're spending millions of dollars on it. And what is going to happen, your pickleball suggestion, although the name sounds funny, it's a very serious thing. And there are many, many other activities that need to be provided in this city. And your new residents and generations are going to demand that you do exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ken Rock, 721 West Cummerley Street. The cost of this park, that at least the projected cost, concerns me. And I think that we should look into more like a private-public partnership on this because over a million dollars, you could practically have a new pool for that price. So I think we should pull in, maybe look into different ways of funding this. My other concern I want to bring up is, since this is gonna be an off-concrete park or base most of it, what's gonna be the liabilities if people get hurt? And I think that needs to be known that. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Whitney, Allentown. I'm super excited about this project. You know, this is a really great opportunity for us as Allentown to have a world-class facility that's on par with Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. We talk so much about how we're the third biggest city in Pennsylvania. And I think that this is, it's like sometimes you look around and you can see that we have a little bit more in common with the bottom seven of those top ten than the top two. And I think that this is such a great opportunity for us to put ourselves on the map with those major cities that all have world-class skate parks. And the cool thing about skateboarders, I would say, is that you'll never find a skate park where there aren't skateboarders sweeping it every day. We're talking about broken glass. Go try to find some broken glass at a skate park. It's not there because when you're skateboarding and you hit that piece of glass, you're launched off the skateboard. And you're asking, does it hurt when you land? It hurts really bad. That's why when you're skateboarding, you're typically not high because you don't want to think that, you don't want to add anything that's gonna add to the risk of you falling. The other amazing thing about skateboarders is that they spend a ton of money. Skate culture is driving our fashion in this country right now. It's a multi-billion-dollar industry. It brings people regionally. When there's a park like the one being proposed, that's being designed by Grand Line, which is from Seattle, my hometown, it brings people in regionally and who spend a lot, a lot of money. I guarantee you, if this skate park goes off the way that it's planned, you're gonna see new skate shops in Allentown. You're gonna see a huge economic boom from this. So $1.4 million, it's a total bargain. It's gonna stimulate our economy and it's just like a total no-brainer. So we gotta pass this and we can talk about whether or not we need more advocates for tennis later. I'm probably more likely to get into tennis right now than I am into skating. But I definitely think that we just need to move forward with this and celebrate this as one of those moments where we as a city can all agree on something and we can move forward triumphantly and put ourselves on the map and earn that title of the third biggest city in Pennsylvania. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Jeff Reedy. I want to talk a little bit about the skate park as well. Having grown up here in the city of Allentown in the 60s and 70s, we weren't given a lot of opportunities as these young people are given right now with these great skate parks I see in Bethlehem and the proposal here in Allentown. We were chased out of cemeteries and off of city hall steps with our steel-wheeled skateboards. We were banned and eventually kids just stopped skateboarding. I'm glad to see the revitalization of skateboarding. I think it's a really, really important thing for the area and the community and it's a great community-building effort. As far as the, excuse me, I was just outside, it's a little cold. As far as the drawings, there are some proposal drawings down at the cigar factory, I believe. I was down there the other week for a concert. And so there are some drawings down there. You grab a copy, a copy down there of those drawings. You can see what was proposed. Apologies, I'm still shivering. And lastly, I watched the skate park developed over in Bethlehem. I watched the young man, Andy Poe, start with a proposal for a skate park and a small skate shop. He grew into a community leader. He has a skateboard shop in Bethlehem, he has one in Easton, and he's growing that community. And young kids have a place to go. They're not getting in trouble. So I do recommend that the city consider this proposal. I think the money is well-spent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody. Somebody else?
Yeah, my name is Levanzal Sanders, I'm an Allentown native. I've been skating in the eighties, the nineties, up till now. There's no place for us to go, you've chased me a couple times, you know the pain. And that's what a skate park gives you, not running from that, a safe place. You know what I mean? One point four, yeah, it costs, but they've chased us, so a lot of things seem to happen someday. So, the, we, the insurance, football, baseball, you have parks and the insurance runs into that. Tennis courts, we already changed one to a skate park. I live five minutes away from that park and nobody plays on that park. I cut through that way to get to the mall, so I know exactly, there's no, and as far as people going to that park, they will still go to that park like they've been for years. I've been going to that park all my life. So all this stuff that you're worried about what could happen, it would have already happened. We don't have a skate park, but we have everything else in every park in this town. Even when it comes to sports now, you have the track and field stuff, but there's not one skate park for the kids. Get right, we need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for the public? Seeing nobody.
Okay, R forty-nine, the skate park grant, I'm Mr. Greedy.
I was always for the skate park, yes. I was always for the skate park.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Clay?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Sappa?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hammond. I talked with my, two of my colleagues here, and R fifty, we're gonna move to committee and we're gonna have wording so that we're not voting on a blank slate here, and we will have that, we'll set up a, Mr. Hammond, I think we'll move that to rules, let's move that to rules in chambers intergovernmental, to my committee, and then we will have, we'll set up a committee here for next week, and then we'll have this back on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Okay, and R fifty expresses gratitude to the FBI and federal prosecutors.
Alright, we'll move that, like you said, to committee and we'll have it, we'll have wording for the next meeting. We'll go to ordinances for introduction, Bill thirteen.
Bill thirteen amends the two thousand eighteen general fund budget by transferring five hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars in the number of accounts, three hundred sixty-four thousand for a hundred twenty-eight dollars in various accounts for the minimum funds, and seventy-five thousand for the solid waste fund to provide, basically, more services provided by an outside vendor for the malware obfuscation.
Yes, that will go to Mr. Greedy's committee, but it says here we have public comment on this before going to committee. So, it'll, we'll be, it'll be heard at the committee meeting also, but if anybody from the public wants to weigh in on this tonight, they certainly may, and then, seeing nobody, we'll move it to the committee and, Mr. Greedy's committee.
Hey, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Resolutions for introduction, I don't see any. Do we have any new business?
Move to adjourn?
Uh, no, not yet, go to vote first.
I just wanted to remind the public that on Thursday the twelfth, at six o'clock, here in these chambers, there will be a meeting held with our police department announcing the new guidelines for the pawn shop rules and regulations. So anybody who may be interested in that, please attend that, certainly anybody that does a business of any type with pawn shops or pawn shops, and if you left, will be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. President, members of city council and city residents. First, I want to thank you for electing me to serve as interim mayor of the city of Allentown. It is a tremendous honor and privilege, a place to work with all of you individually and collectively. What we need to do now is work together to restore and rebuild the city's government's reputation. The entities that do business with this city have to know that they're getting a fair shape. The residents of the city have to know that we are doing these jobs for them and not for our own personal benefit. The mayor, members of council, may not always agree on the best course forward, but we have to be mutually respectful of one another. My pledge to you is to run the executive branch of this city with openness and transparency. What that simply means, openness and transparency, is very simply to tell the truth and be honest, and I will always tell the truth and I will always be honest. I've already learned a lot about the different responsibilities between the executive branch and the legislative branch of city government in just the past three days. I am interested in the opinions of all stakeholders, listening to all sides of the issue, the best way to, we can move forward. I look forward to solving the city problems with you and all the residents of the city of Allentown. I have a pledge to attend council meetings, and I want you to know that my door is always open, not only to city council members, but all stakeholders and residents in the city of Allentown. I went looking for a simple quote to end my remarks this evening, and I got one from a gentleman named Matthew Lesbell, who does infomercials and how to get grant money, grant money from the federal government. Matthew said, "Good government only happens when the people working in it do their jobs and they do them well." Together, let's make good government for Allentown. Thank you, and I enjoyed my first meeting as the mayor of the city of Allentown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you have agreement on council, but I also, as you said, we're not always gonna agree, so.
That's why.
Let's, let's take the honeymoon while we got it and we'll go from there, because these are the people out there that are gonna keep us, keep our hands to the fire.
And, and you need to do that, and we will be there for them, and as well as we'll be there for you. Thank you.
Absolutely, and it was good to see you here.
Thank you.
And with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Robinson's reading an email first, could you read that email and see if you're okay then with the?
I, did you send it to my city accountant?
Yeah, and so it's an email from Mr. Kimberly that says, "By not approving the resolution tonight," this is for the Harb and I, "the resolution is tabled for the carriage house in seventy-five day limit may expire on the application to demo, and the demolition will be approved." So I don't know the details of that, but he sent that to us.
And again, this is why I think it's a little frustrating, Mr. President, that we didn't have anyone from the department here tonight to discuss this.
I kind of, I kind of agree.
You know, that, that's a significant problem for me, because as stated, and this is a conversation earlier, we're looking at the possibility of having demolition, speculative demolition, excuse me, speculative demolition on this, which is a huge problem for the city. So I have a problem that no one was here to speak about this, this is not a new issue, this has been something that I've been involved with trying to fix this, along with Allentown Preservation League, OAPA, and the city staff, so I'm a little frustrated that no one was here tonight to speak about this if we're running up against the clock on this.
So he's saying by not approving it, it might run up against the seventy-five day limit, and once you hit that seventy-five days, it automatically becomes an approval. I don't know the details, I just got the email.
Do we know, did he give you a date on that, Mr. Hammond, when it started? Because I know they voted on it in the March meeting, but I don't know when the application started.
Uh, he told me the book, I really couldn't figure it out. No, he didn't give me dates, he said, "Well, you're lucky you couldn't figure it out."
Well, but, but the resolution is to approve a demolition anyway, so if it's running seventy-five day.
So he's saying it's not to approve a demolition?
Well, no, the, the problem is, it was classified as a demolition, but when you read the backup documentation, and this was, is a very complicated case, which is again, why I wish someone would have been here, there is work being done with the property owners to try and avoid demolition. The city, to the city's credit, to Mr. Lightner's credit, Mr. Kimberly's credit, are doing everything humanly possible to not demolish this property. So I have to give complete and total credit there, they are going above and beyond to try and save this property. But, in the way the certificate is written, it is classified as a certificate for demolition, because what Harb did was, they gave, demolition was put in there as a, if a structural engineer says that it is structurally deficient, we can demolish it. However, there are other guidelines, and it's listed in the documentation, for, we're gonna try to do X, Y, and Z first. So, the problem I have is because it's classified as demolition, that could potentially create an issue for me with legality, because it's technically giving them the ability to demolish if the city chooses to, when we have an engineering study that currently says the building is fine, work's been done to make it structurally sound, so my concern is that it needs to be adjusted. It's not for demolition, that's, that's one option in the toolbox, but it's not the primary, it's not everything that's being done. So that's why I was hoping to be able to have this conversation with Mr. Kimberly, if we could amend it, because I don't know if we can, if we could table it, what we need to do, if Harb needs to take another look at it, since demolition is now not the primary focus. So again, that's why I was hoping we could have this conversation, and I didn't, the seventy-five day timeline, my understanding was started in March, which was when Harb voted on this, but if it starts earlier than that, then we could have an issue.
Mr. Robinson, you entertain a motion then to approve it with a caveat there that if it is, if it is deemed to be the majority, has to come before council before it does?
I don't know if we can.
So we're running through an issue that he's, he's talking about.
Hi, Mr. Hammond, do we know when the seventy-five days is up?
I couldn't figure it out, all I know is the Harb secretary says that by not approving the resolution tonight, the resolution is tabled for the carriage house, the seventy-five day time limit may expire on the application to demo, and the demolition would be approved. That's what the Harb secretary is telling.
And my concern, Mr. President, is to Mr. Greedy's point, I don't know if we can amend it.
Right.
Harb has to do that.
If we knew when the seventy-five days was up, I would, my suggestion would be that we set up a special meeting and just deal with this, although I hate to set up more meetings, but we have to deal with it.
Right.
Like, could we do it next?
He's saying if you, and I don't know the details, I'm just telling you what I'm reading on the seatbelt, he's, he's saying if you don't act, you're going to by default possibly approve the demolition, but if you do act, you're not gonna approve the demolition. That's what he's saying, right.
Then that would require, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, Mr. Hammond, we would have to, since it was separated from R forty-nine.
Bring it back.
We would have to bring it back, but also we would have to, and this is where I'm concerned about something, and if our solicitor could weigh in on this, so we approved R forty-nine already, amended, removing it. What steps would we need to take if now, when we remove from R forty-nine, we want to bring back, and also, to deny it, we'd have to take a no vote on that, correct?
Well, we have the date.
They have the date.
We have the date.
March ninth, which would take us well past middle of May to get to seventy-five days.
So March ninth was the date?
March ninth was the date, according to the records.
Well, obviously, he's not much for the watch, we thought that too, he's not much for that.
We're looking right at the, right now at the permit.
Okay, so with the permit, you would like to see, that's the permit right here, that's the permit then.
Alright, well, if the permit's saying March ninth, Mr. President, I think we're fine. And is that, just to get a closer way on that too, is that an actual assumption?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, just so we're covered in all bases. Thank you very much, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Okay, good. Now, do I have a motion? To adjourn? Thank you. Thank you all, goodnight.